You only had a contract.
I'll bring the meeting of the Tuolumne County Planning Commission order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation in front of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here. We've got a good turnout tonight. It should be an interesting meeting, hopefully. I'd like to welcome Mike Gustafson to the commission, newly appointed from the Groveland area. And we look forward to working with you, Mike.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good to be here.
Very good. Any reports from the staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I too would like to welcome Commissioner Gustafson to the commission and also let you know that we do have three projects for your consideration at your next meeting on April 20th. So do plan to come to a meeting in two weeks.
Okay. That's it?
That's all for tonight.
Okay. Any reports from commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Any report from the Board of Supervisors Planning Committee representative?
I'll report that we have not yet had a meeting.
This has been going on quite a while.
They want to wait until they get another representative where they have another meeting.
Yeah, maybe that's it. Okay. Any report from the Agriculture Advisory Committee representative, which is me, and that has not met either. In fact, I don't think that's met in some time, anyway. Okay, the next order of business, election of officers. And we are to elect a chair, a vice chair, a representative to the Supervisors Planning Committee, and in fact, two of them, and one alternate to that same committee. So I will take nominations for chairman of the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, may I nominate John Baker?
Jerry Baker.
Excuse me, Jerry Baker. Thank you.
I think John Baker.
Okay, do we have a second to that nomination?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor of Jerry Baker, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered on a unanimous vote. Shall I go ahead with the vice chair or just turn it over to him?
Why don't you go ahead and finish the elections?
I'll finish it up. This is my swan song. I'll take nominations for vice chair of the commission. Vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Cole.
Cole Prisbola? Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Before we vote, any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Cole, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered on a unanimous vote. Next, Board of Supervisors Planning Committee representatives, need two of them. Have any nominations or volunteers?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor John Gray is chair of that committee, and right now he still intends to have the meetings on the third Thursday of the month in the afternoon. So if that helps you decide whether or not you're available to attend those meetings.
After third Thursdays in the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. Colors anybody? Yes, go ahead, Charlotte.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to serve in that capacity.
Very good. Do we have a second volunteer?
I'd like to nominate, but why don't we nominate Charlotte? I'd like to nominate Charlotte as one of the, do we want to go through the nomination process?
No, I'll just take volunteers and then we can vote on it.
Okay. In that case, I would like to suggest that Mike should volunteer.
Very good.
Please, Mike.
Okay, we have, we have two volunteers, Charlotte and Mike. Let's take a vote on it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered. We do have two representatives. Then our final election, an alternate member to the same committee.
I'll volunteer for that. I can be an alternate.
You know, pretty easy, Cole. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we got Cole, he's volunteering. All in favor of Cole being the alternate, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so ordered. And with that, the election is concluded, and I will vacate this seat and turn it over to our new chairman, Jerry Baker.
You just moved the hammer.
Yeah, we're gonna give our seats.
You want to sit here?
Not to sit at the seat.
Okay. It's all yours.
Okay. Approval on minutes for meeting of March 16th. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll so move.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you probably need to abstain.
I abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay. Most soon passes, one, two, three, four, five, two, one, two, three, four, five, five with one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, if you could, under the Brown Act, if it's unanimous, you just say it passed unanimously, but if, since we have one abstention, you need to identify who abstained.
Okay, so with the abstention being Mike Gustafson. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll open the public here, the public comments period. This period is such a time when you can approach the board, the commission, and talk about anything that is not on the agenda. We can't make any decisions on that, but we would gladly hear it, and anything that's not on the printed agenda. So anyone who would like to speak on something that is not on the printed agenda, now is your time. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll open the public hearing. The first item being Benjir Conifer Communications. And Ms. Shane, if you could share that with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Harris, on behalf of Conifer Communications, has submitted an application for conditional use permit, CUP 15-019, for a wireless communication facility, which includes a 50-foot-tall tower to be used by the property owner and also Conifer Communications. The tower has already been constructed, and it's currently located on a site that is 8.2 acres in size and is zoned residential state, 5-acre minimum. Project site is located at 18940 Vernal Drive in the Groveland community. The project site features a residence and an observatory. The tower was constructed as part of the observatory in 2014 for use by the Bay School of San Francisco Astronomy Department, which, so that it could connect their observatory on the project site with their lab in the Presidio in San Francisco. In the summer of 2014, the use of the tower was expanded from just the school to Conifer Communications, which is a commercial service, provides internet service to customers in the Groveland area and other parts of the county, and actually outside the county as well. Our office received a complaint regarding the tower in January of 2015, and we did an inspection, determined that it was in violation of the zoning ordinance because a conditional use permit is required for the tower, and also a building permit was required for construction of the tower. And so an application was submitted for the conditional use permit, which is before you this evening. In processing this application, we received two letters in opposition. The opposition expressed concerns about the impact that the tower would have on their neighboring property values. They were concerned about privacy, noise, and health impacts from the electromagnetic fields. As you saw in your staff report, we have addressed those issues. The health issues are addressed by the FCC, which has guidelines on what are acceptable levels, and it's anticipated that this tower certainly would comply with those regulations. I would like to mention one error I found in the staff report, and that's a correction to condition number eight, where we're referring back to the landscaping condition, which your report says, let me find the page number for you, it's a page 15 of the conditions, refers to condition seven. It should be condition three, so it should read landscaping shall be installed pursuant to the approved landscape plan referenced in condition three. And I'll be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
You know, this will be the third one we've approved recently, and there's already several over there. Seems to me Groveland's gonna have the best coverage any place in the whole United States of America. I think there's six, we're talking about six towers. Nothing wrong with that, but it's kind of unusual.
Well, it's one area of the county where there have been a lot of gaps in the past. And Verizon, for example, as you know, from the last project came before you at the golf course, that was their interest, what's to fill that gap in Pine Mountain Lake. And that's really what these improvements and these additional facilities are, is to fill the gaps in the communication facilities.
It should also be noted that this actually, Conifer Communications, is in the internet business.
Yeah.
And so what they're actually doing is providing wireless internet service, not cell phone connections at that point.
Oh, okay.
And not that there might not at some point in the future be a cell power hooked up to it, but currently, this is to provide internet coverage.
Yeah, well, that's fine. It's very, very positive development over there, because for years, people had said about the coverage, and all of a sudden, it's happening, so it's very good.
I want to disclose, and I don't think it's anything that causes the bias for me, but it was because I am a Conifer customer, as are a lot of people in Groveland, they cover that area fairly, but I am a Conifer customer. Yeah. Any other questions for staff? Okay, no more questions for staff. We'll open the public part of the hearing. This is an opportunity for those who are in favor or opposition of this to have their say. How many folks here are here to talk about this issue versus the second issue on the agenda? Okay, I don't think we need to put time limits on it then. So from the proponent, are you the proponent?
My name is Amy Augustine, Augustine Planning, and I'm here representing Mr. Harris as well as Mr. Benjir. I'll try to pronounce his name correctly. Mr. Benjir extends his apologies for not being here tonight. He is in fact on the Board of Trustees for the Exploratorium in San Francisco, a nonprofit which raises money for science education for kids. And as you can tell from the name of the project, the Tuolumne Skies Observatory Tower, that is his passion. And for those of you who had the chance to see the site, and I hope at least some of you did, there is in fact an observatory on the site, and then the tower is uphill and on the other side, so that it can transmit to the observatory. The Bay School, as we speak, is in the observatory. They're up there for their intercession week, and should anybody wonder what it looks like inside the observatory, they've been Facebooking and blogging and all those other fun things on their break from being at the Presidio in San Francisco. This did begin as a complaint for zoning violation. Alas, it did start out as a single use for Mr. Benjir for getting enough internet capacity to actually get the transmission of a lot of information, photos and telescope readings and a lot of computer information all the way down to the Presidio. And then it expanded for Mr. Harris to use as Conifer for his commercial clients. Alas, they believed that it was a small use and not a commercial use, and upon learning that, they did in fact apply for their conditional use permit and hire a local planner, so that in the future complaints will not be a problem. Now, I mentioned that I hope some of you had a chance to visit it, because the first picture in the staff report is quite horrid looking. However, on pages 26, actually on page 26, I think is a somewhat more accurate portrayal of what it actually looks like when you are driving by. You will see the tower if you walk and stop in one certain location and look towards it, you will see the other view that you saw earlier in your staff report. There will be some landscaping added, in part because as of the drought, a lot of the existing trees there are starting to die, so that's one of those problems we'll have to address. The applicant, the landowner, they're all in agreement with the conditions. Want to thank staff for working with them to get this, all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, and be happy to answer any questions you have. Mr. Harris is here to answer any technical questions you might have, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else would like to speak in favor of this project?
Thank you. Sure, sure.
I'm supposed to inform you that while you can share your name with us as per the Brown Act, you do not need to share your name.
Oh, that's fine. My name is David Harris with Conifer Communications. I would ask that the members of the board approve this use permit. What I just asked Ms. Shane to pass out is a flyer that we had previously passed out in the town of Groveland, offering free internet to visitors, so they can reach back home to China, India, wherever they're from. So many phone plans from outside of the country do not allow international, so they're handicapped, they gotta look for Wi-Fi spots. And you are correct, there's been a plethora of new applications of it, but you are correct. Mr. Baker, we are internet and not cell. That is an ISP tower, not a cell tower. Huge difference. It's like night and day with equipment, with requirements. We're in unlicensed frequency, there's nothing dangerous there, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk to you for hours.
We'll try not to have that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else would like to speak in favor?
Hello, I'm Carl Danbacher. I'm here as a noncustomer, but as an advocate for what this will do for our tourism infrastructure, as well as for the economic development opportunities we have, in working with the park. Over 4 million visitors come to the park every year. We have a certain percentage within Tuolumne County. But now we also have an opportunity to expand some infrastructure that's desperately needed, and it encourages others to come into our community and take the risks. So I ask you to approve as presented this permit for this operation. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Yeah, good evening. My name's Matt DiLamont. I have property on Vernal Drive that is a parcel, I believe, or two parcels past where the tower is. I've been up there and I've never seen it. I see a lot of dead trees, and as a businessman, I appreciate the fact that we're growing and expanding our internet service in Tuolumne County. Now, I do understand some of the neighbors' concerns with traffic. It is kind of shangri-la up there at times, but at other times, it's not a very nice area at the end of the road, if you've ever been up there and seen what's happened. I've had the sheriff up there numerous times, even though I don't have a house on the property, I do have a wellhouse and power and water. I'm concerned about illegal dumping up there, so I would much prefer to see some development up there on top of that mountain rather than none. And I just hope that Conifer can proceed forward and the tower can stay, and I hope somebody could develop my property and put a tower up, because one side looks at Merced and the other side looks at downtown Sonora and Pine Mountain Lake. And right about now with all the dead trees, I think that's probably all that property's pretty much good for. So I do sympathize with the property owners and homeowners that live on that road, but I don't really see how much, maybe David knows, or someone knows how much traffic has increased for those neighbors. After construction, I would think very little.
We don't even go up there once a day on average.
Yeah, that's all inside the report. There's David in the report there.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak neutrally?
I don't care one way or the other, but looking at the pictures, I can't see it, so I kind of agree with that. I'm just wondering what on earth took so long? There was a complaint on January 5th of 2015. The letter was sent on May 11th of 2015, so it's now April of 2016.
Would you like to address that?
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. The complaint came in in January of 2015, and I believe as most of your commissioners are aware, the Board of Supervisors has directed staff to make code compliance issues low priority unless they are of health and safety nature, just because of limited staffing resources in our agency. So that is why it took a long time just to do the original inspection and then send out the notices. Once we received the application, I believe there was a request for additional information that we had to wait for.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? I'm sorry, we're neutral. Anybody else who wants to speak neutrally to this project? Okay, with that being said, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
I think we are.
Very well. I move we approve this project conditional use permit, CUP 15-019, based on findings and subject, findings A through F and subject to conditions 1 through 19.
Mr. Chairman, could I clarify that that includes the change, the correction to condition number eight?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? There are no discussions. I call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, second on our agenda tonight is Pet Paradise, FOAC/Miller. And I believe that you have a...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, under full disclosure, I will recuse myself. Staff has recommended that, because I am a tenant in a small office building that's within 30 or 40 feet of the proposed kennel.
Okay.
So I will recuse myself and leave the premises as is required by law.
Thank you. So does that mean you're not coming back?
You got it. Probably did every night.
Please dock his pay by 50% for this evening.
So self-serving.
See you, Nick.
Good job, your chair.
Okay, so Ms. Shane, will you present this project to us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application by the Friends of the Animal Community, as represented by Maureen Miller, for a conditional use permit, CUP 15-020, to allow the operation of a kennel for up to eight animals overnight within existing buildings, and a daycare facility for up to 15 dogs or cats, or a combination thereof, either outside or inside, depending on the weather, on the subject property, which is 2 tenths of an acre and is currently zoned general commercial. The property is owned by Pet Paradise Daycare and Hotel LLC, and is located at 14841 and 14847 Mono Way in East Sonora. This project also is the result of a code compliance case. We did receive a complaint that there was a kennel being operated on this property. Our investigators found that, yes, indeed, that it has been used for kennel, and that improvements have been made to the buildings on the site without building permits. So the property owner has applied for the required conditional use permit to allow this facility to remain in operation. The operator is the Friends of the Animal Community. That is a nonprofit organization, and they rescue animals. That's their mission. They rescue animals, and they would like to be able to use the existing facilities on the site, which includes an enclosed area for the dogs or cats, and also kennels that are within the building on the rear of the property. The building in the front of the property is proposed to be used for their headquarters, which would include office space for people who want to come and adopt these rescued animals and for things like that, and they're also, they're just their offices. While processing this conditional use permit application, we obviously contacted property owners within the neighboring area, and we received four letters of opposition. The opponents have stated they had concerns about the noise from barking dogs. We have proposed a condition of approval that would require that the project comply with the noise requirements contained in the Tuolumne County General Plan, which are measured at the property line. There was concern about the runoff from the site onto neighboring property, and condition of approval would require that a curb be constructed in order to direct the runoff from, into an existing drain rather than going off-site. And there was concealed about the storage of animal waste on the property. Condition of approval would require that all the waste be contained within sealed receptacles and that they be disposed of on a weekly basis. So we believe that the conditions of approval have addressed the concerns of adjoining property owners.
Any questions for staff?
I guess I have one. Because typically, when you have a conditional use, like the curb for the runoff, they have to do that before the permit is issued, so at what point does the curb get installed?
The conditions of approval in this case, because it's already in operation, we've specified timeframes. So if you look at the conditions starting on page 10, condition three must be done within 180 days of the effective date of the use permit, and they also have to get a kennel license and things like that before they can continue operations. But that gives them the 180 days in order to get the building permits and bring the property and otherwise into compliance.
Thank you.
May I ask, where does 180 days come from? How's that number picked?
Well, we work with the applicants to give them a reasonable amount of time to make the corrections.
And the complainants, is that a reasonable time for them?
Well...
That's a half a year is only reasonable.
Right, six months. The direction from the Board of Supervisors is to work with property owners to bring the property into compliance and not be punitive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Okay, with that, we'll open it up to the public hearing. Same rules apply. We'll speak at those speaking, the proponent, or those speaking in favor, opposed, and neutral. And then if we end up having... How many people intend to speak here? Okay, less limited to, you know, four minutes per, in terms of the thing, so we can keep it moving along here. And so those that would like to speak in favor, come on up, and as we said before, if you'd like to give us your name, you're welcome to, but it is not required.
Oh, you can know my name. I'm Maureen Miller. I'm the one who, I'm a volunteer with FOAC that submitted the use permit.
Yep.
And I wanted to clarify something. As Bev was talking, it sounded, we've been, FOAC went in and leased the building in February. We started there in February, so we leased it from the owners of Pet Paradise. I wanted to make sure that was clear. So we moved in not knowing there was any violation and moved forward, and we knew we were moving in in December, and so we submitted the use permit in December, the application. So I just wanted to clarify that, because we're trying to do everything the right way moving forward. So, and we didn't find out there was any building issues or, you know, no permit for any changes that were made till recently. So I wanted to give you a little history about FOAC. We have been operating since 2001 without a facility. Since then, we have adopted out over 4,000 animals in our community. Just this year alone, we've done over 90. And out of our new facility, since we opened, and we only have a limit of four animals there now, that's why we're trying to get approved for this permit, we have done over 60 dogs coming in and out of our facility. And it's wonderful, we have our own office where all of our paperwork is. We help seniors, adopt seniors. It's just a lovely community in helping people and seeing the smiles on these people's faces when they have a dog to adopt or a cat. Mainly, it's dogs at our facility, and our cats are adopted out at Tia's Tub and Toys. But we have a great support group of volunteers that, we've had so many community members stepping forward, saying if you get your... stepping forward, saying, "If you get your, you know, permit, that we're here to support you, we'll walk the dogs." We're really controlling the animals that we have now for any barking issues. We're keeping everything clean, sprayed down, everything. So it's a great service to our community. We love our animals. We have a great support staff, and I hope that you'll vote in favor of approving our use permit, so we can get our kennel license and move on.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
No?
I do.
Okay.
This was already a, somehow associated with pets before you showed up?
Yes.
And they had their own animals there?
Yeah, they were more of a boarding facility, boarding and doggy daycare.
And they've been there for some number of years before you showed up?
I'm not, I think approximately two years. And so when we found out they were moving, I guess they're opening something on Tuolumne Road, it was like, oh, this would be the perfect spot for us to move in. It was already had doggy prints on the walls and everything, and we thought, that would be great. So we talked to the owner, and she said, "Yeah, I'll run it to you." And this is, because FOAC's been paying boarding for our dog, you know, the dogs that we save their lives out of animal control and the community, saving dogs from not getting to animal control. We're pulling dogs, you don't know how many surrenders we try to, the calls Darlene gets or we get a day, trying people, nine-year-old dogs, 10-year-old dogs, they've had their whole lives and they want to get rid of them. So we didn't know, but it's been great for us. We have a place, we were, prior to this, it was all out of people's cars, out of, you know, stuff at my house, everybody's house, and now we have our own place to call home. And it's made a world of difference on keeping all your paperwork straight, and having a fax machine and scanner and everything you can use right at your one facility and everything.
Thank you.
One question. The facility before you was not permitted, did I understand that correctly?
I guess they had never obtained the use permit...
I see.
...to in turn get a kennel license.
I see.
So we didn't know that, so as soon as we knew we were coming in, and we work close with animal control every day, so, you know, we're in contact with Jennifer, the manager down at animal control, and we've gotten her guidance on, you know, what's the best cleaning solutions, what doesn't have ammonia smell, or, you know, how to do things. And actually, we want to have her, if she would, come up and help train our volunteers, and, you know, she's willing to share, you know, operating procedures, how to really do things right, and we want to do everything the right way, and that's why we came into this, did the use permit, and, you know, now we're trying to get our kennel license. And it's more for, we bring the dogs in and we get them out to foster homes. We want to bring them in and move them out to get them into a home environment, not leave them in a kennel. So that's our goal, but we have to have somewhere to bring them in order so they don't have the, whatever might be the result if they stay at animal control too long.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Others?
Hello, I'm Darlene Matthews, and I founded Friends of the Animal Community 16 years ago. So I wanted to point out that we have gone around to all of the businesses around where we are at 14841, Abbey Carpet, Tractor Supply, every business around there, and asked them to sign a petition stating in favor of. I think we only had one opposition of probably 2025 businesses. We also have over 120.
Anything you give us, we don't give you back.
That's okay.
That's the way we are.
Yeah. So we don't, we don't feel that we have a lot of opposition. This is a very temporary state for the animals to come and go through. We have, if dogs are out on the yard, we have someone out with them, so there's not barking, continual barking. We have a resident that stays there every night in the back, keeps the dogs inside with them. We are on top of all of the waste. It's just, you know, we are, and we are open to any complaints from anybody that feels like, I think there's a gal that does massage during certain hours, you know, we will hear anybody's concerns and try to meet them.
Doggies massage?
Uh, there's a massage, no. No, 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 no.
I was confused.
We might implement that though.
I was getting ready to sign up.
So, we would really ask that you consider giving us a use permit for this kennel. It's a long time coming. We have reduced the euthanasia rate at animal control by a lot. I think we are the, I am going to say probably that, as far as adopting dogs and cats out, we are one of the highest numbers in the community, and we have the smallest facility that we're trying to work out of. We're all volunteers, and we don't take any money to keep our, we are fundraising to keep everything going, so we're not taking away from any funding from the community. So that's what I have to say.
Questions? Thank you. Others that would like to speak in favor?
I forgot some.
I'm sorry.
My name is Gail Witzelsteiner, and I would like to speak in favor of this project. I have on two occasions called FOAC to assist with large numbers of dogs that were a community hazard as they were running in packs along the road. We worked with animal control, and FOAC was able to handle all of the dogs and get them adopted out, all of them were young. And I think that this project will enable them to have regular operational revenue that they currently do not have by being able to have the daycare at their new facility. And considering how much energy those volunteers put into fundraising in order to do this community service, I think it would be ideal for them to have another revenue source. So I support this, and I hope that you will too.
Thank you. Others that would like to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
I can hear the other side of the story.
All right.
What they're trying to do as a group, I think is very honorable, and I agree with them, I love animals. However, as the property owner, just to the east of them, and representing the property owner to the west of them, we object for the use of this property. It was, it started a year and a half ago without any permits as a kennel. We saw this build up and wondered what was happening. All of a sudden, the kennel showed up, the county found out about it, and basically closed it down, because they couldn't meet the requirements for a dog kennel. Now they found something that could use the property that they modified, and I understand it's a good cause, and I wish them all the luck of the world. But as the property owner next door, I really object to it. I have a letter from the property owner to the west that I'd like to read to you. It's a short letter, and it kind of explains how I feel about it too, if you don't mind. Says, "Because I cannot be present at the meeting this evening, I've requested that Mr. Stu Kingman present my views regarding the conditional use permit. My name is Suzanne Sack. I am the owner of Sierra Plaza, the property located next door on the west side of the proposed project site. Let me first say that I'm a dog lover, as have been my tenants, and I applaud the work that's done by Friends of the Animal Community, and I do too. I've read carefully the evaluation and recommendations regarding the conditional use permit request, and I want to highlight the following issues. Back in 2013 and 14, when I first heard that a dog grooming business would be operating next door, it seemed of little consequence. Sometime afterwards, unbeknownst to me, or to my tenants, several changes were made to the buildings and property, including pouring a large concrete slab right next to our property with no permits. I've then heard that Pet Paradise would be offering doggy daycare as well. Suddenly, my tenants had issues with dogs outside barking, the stench of poop and cleaning solvents, and mounds of dog hair that washed out onto our property. My tenants spoke directly to the Pet Paradise owners, their business had become a nuisance, and all of us felt blindsided by its not permitted establishment in our midst. In 2014, Pet Paradise applied for a conditional use permit to house dogs overnight. I wrote to oppose that permit because of the continuing impact on our property. I understand the owners then abandoned that permit because the upgrades required, including a fire sprinkler system, would be too costly, and I understand that Pet Paradise has moved someplace else at this point. In the meantime, it has been fashioned for a pet business, even though all changes were made without permits. So it should come as no surprise that they're looking for someone to lease that space to, for whom these changes are appropriate, and they found one. I also understand that because the FOAC is a nonprofit, one of the costly previous requirements, or perhaps there are others, installing a sprinkler system will, for some reason, not apply to them. If you look at your packet of page 12, you'll see that my back building is labeled incorrectly, showing that Tidy Tech is the business closest to the Mono Way building where the animals will be kennelled. That's not the case. The end of the building is occupied by a masseuse, who has been in that space for over 15 years. One of the things that has made that space ideal for her business is its unobtrusive back corner location, which has offered the quiet that she requires. While I noted in the report that animal control had not received any complaints about barking, what you don't know is that she has complained directly to the Pet Paradise owners. Her very livelihood is dependent on her business, and her ability to thrive in that location. Both the noise and stench from dog poop and solvents have made it difficult for her to work. Furthermore, the concrete pad was portable in feet of her door, and she's had to speak up about enormous amounts of dog air coming out onto the property literally, so much that it had to be raked. Otherwise, the tenants have complained about the barking and smells as well.
We'll need to wrap it up, I'm sorry. Time's up.
I'm sorry. Okay, I've gone to great lengths at Sierra Plaza to bring in tenants who are respectful of each other and have the community. I feel any kind of outdoor pet business is simply not a good fit in such close proximity to their business in the area. Again, I have no reservations about the good work they do, but I have no doubt that both the community and the animals could be better served if they had to locate in a more biocolic, less populated location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Don't leave yet, there might be questions for us. Yes, John?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kingman, we received a letter from you in opposition, and we read the letter, and understand that you're the business owner just to the east.
I'm the property owner, not the business owner.
Right, I'm property owner, thank you. Excuse me.
There are eight businesses in that building. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be eight businesses.
Thank you. It appears to me that your complaints, and also the complaints of the other neighbor, Ms. Sack, barking and smell, and the refuse running across the neighboring property when they wash things down, it appears to me that those concerns were addressed in the conditions that if the new, if the proposed business runs the business the way they're required to, that there should not be barking sounds above an allowed, an acceptable level, there should not be a smell because they're perhaps washing things down more regularly than the previous business did, and they're also required to build a curb so that when they wash things down, everything stays on their own property. And my question for you is, if they, if the project is approved tonight, and FOAC is allowed to conduct business there, if you found that they conducted their business in such a way that these negative impacts didn't happen anymore, could you imagine yourself being favorable of them as a neighboring business, or would you say that under no conditions, would you favor it?
I think I would favor them in that case, but I don't think they can meet all the conditions. I agree with the smell, the odor, and cleanup, but barking, I just don't think they're going to be able to control it. And that's the biggest objection I have, really, is the noise. A barking dog is a warning sign, it attracts people's attention, and if you have it on business office, you're trying to talk to people, sell goods, communicate, and a dog is barking in the background, it's very, very disruptive. If you're ever laying in bed at night, and your neighbor's dog bark, and bark, and bark, and bark, and bark, you know how maddening that can be, even if it's quiet. But a dog, even a hundred feet away, can emit a barking as loud as 100 decibels, and that's very, very disturbing. Now, if the animals were indoors all the time, probably no problem, but they're not going to be. And the barking's going to occur before they can do anything about it. I mean, let's face it, cleanup, yes, we can control, sweep-up, we can control, odor, we can control, but do you know when the dog's going to bark?
Well, perhaps they will be able to bring a barking dog indoors.
The damage is done.
I see, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak neutrally? Sorry, one bite at the apple, I'm afraid.
Rebuttal.
I'm sorry, yes, we haven't gotten to that part yet. Okay, yeah, anyone who would like to speak, speak in rebuttal, and we can only speak with respect to someone, something, a point that was made during the opposition. Okay, that's be pointed.
Well, I do want to address those concerns. What I would like to say, though, in talking to some of, when I went around for petitions, if we are talking about noise, there is a live oak music center right there, and one of the tenants said that the people coming in and learning how to play musical instruments with the doors open all day, if we're talking about noise pollution, is extremely high in that area. We are going to be doing everything that we can to keep our dogs with volunteers anytime they are out on the yards, not barking. And we do have a resident that stays there and brings the dogs in every night, and the businesses are closed in the evening. So we feel that we will have a handle on this. And Jennifer Clark just told me today she has not ever had one complaint at animal control from Pet Paradise prior. I did hear you guys did have a complaint, but she has not had a complaint. So we're hoping that we can manage this. Thank you.
Except, one moment, yeah, question for...
Oh, question, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Matthews, if your project passes tonight, if you're allowed to do business there, I would like to recommend that you reach out to the neighboring property owners, particularly Mr. Kingman and Ms. Sack, and perhaps invite them to come tour your operation, and make sure that they have a direct way of communicating with you if they hear barking dogs, or if there's something, if they're not satisfied with the way you're operating. I hope you can reach out to them in a way that encourages them to come to you first...
Yes.
...and not to feel that they have to complain.
Definitely, definitely. We want to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone else that would like to speak in rebuttal? And since there was a rebuttal, there's an opportunity for a sir rebuttal. So if you'd like to rebut the rebutter, here's another chance for you. And then we're really done.
Well, the only thing I would say is that I want them to know that we love dogs, we love cats, we have animals. What they're trying to do is a marvelous idea. I still rebut the noise once the dog barks, the damage is done for us. Trying to have, I tried to find a client to come in and take office space, and have dogs barking in the background, it's just something that will ruin my business permanently. Thank you.
Okay, that being said, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
May I address staff, please? One question. The conditions of this particular project seem sufficient so that it would be, the problems would be mitigated. What if, if permits are granted and those conditions are not met? Well, do we have then a complaint-driven process before something is done?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Yes. So if anyone, the neighbors have concerns, they can certainly call, and we will respond, and it would be through a co-compliance process.
Thank you.
And I'd like to pursue that just a little further. Is it possible that if the conditions were not met and there were complaints, that they could be closed up? could be closed up?
There is a provision in the ordinance code that does allow us to revoke permits if there are violations of conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. And I have a general comment. Go ahead. I've been to this location a number of times. I bought a lot of electronics from Live Oak Music Center, and I do have to admit that when, oftentimes, when I pulled in the main driveway coming off Mono Way, I could certainly hear them playing, you know, working on their instruments, testing things out. And also, when I've been there, which is as close as I can get, the noise coming off of Mono Way seemed to me to be, to my ear, objectionable, so I tend to think that maybe, you know, Mono Way is going to produce as much noise as a dog might, but I don't know. And it seems like that's a possibility.
Any other discussion?
I guess I'd like to add that from a value of the service, having lived in a rural spot that tended to be a place where people chose to dump their dogs, it is a huge problem for the folks that are receiving the dogs. Now, I'm not minimizing the size of the problem it is for those who have to live around where the dogs end up, but people's lives change, and the dogs don't, and the animals don't, and then all of a sudden you end up with them running around bringing down cattle and doing all kinds of bad stuff. So it is a, it is a real problem, I believe, that needs to be resolved. The other thing that I wanted to make a comment on, and we deal with this regularly, is the maximum allowable noise at the border. This is a pretty low bar in terms of, you know, a maximum level of a single incident of 70 dB or 65 dB in the evenings is not very much noise, and the average of 50 is probably not that much different than what you're getting right now off the PA system here. It's pretty close to, that's not a lot of noise. And so, you know, you're right, a dog can create 100 dB of noise, and, you know, you can measure it on your cellphone now. And so, it used to be that if, in fact, you're violating that, it was kind of a difficult thing. It's becoming less and less a difficult thing to be able to say, look, here's a violation. You really have to be able to deal with it, and I think that holding the feet to the fire, you know, should this pass, of the people that are operationally dealing with this is kind of important. So with that, is there a motion to be had here?
I'll make the motion to approve as presented with the conditions.
Okay. We need to do a, I guess, where's the specifics?
Conditions are on page one, so the motion has been made by Commissioner Gesserson and seconded by Commissioner Frazier to approve conditional use permit, CUP 15-020, subject, based upon findings A through F, and subject to conditions 1 through 18.
What she said.
That is the hardest part of the entire job. And we still have a second?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I think that's the last thing on our agenda for today. So with that, we will adjourn. Thank you, everybody.